Good evening, everyone. I see it's 5:00. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the January 6th joint meeting in the West Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board of Directors and the East Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board of Directors. For the West Turlock GSA Board, I call this special joint meeting to order at 5:00 P. M. Chair Zane, do you want to call your meeting order at this time?
Yes, I'll call the East Side Irrigation. Order to the meeting at 5:00.
Thank you. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and Pursuit to Assembly Bill 361, this meeting is being held by conference call without a physical meeting location. This meeting was noticed in accordance with the Brown Act, in addition to a physical meeting posting of the agenda at 333 East Canal Drive. The meeting was noticed online and emailed to the sub-basin's interested parties list. This joint meeting is being recorded and will be posted online. The board secretaries are taking minutes as well. Materials are available online at turlockgroundwater.org. The GSAs encourage public participation during the special meeting. We'll receive public comment at the public comment period portion of the agenda and during specific items. Feel free to use the raise your hand feature in the Zoom platform, or if calling by phone, press star nine on your phone. Separate from tonight's public comment period, the GSA's board will be conducting a public hearing to consider the adoption of the Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan and submittal of the plan to DWR for its review. Members of the public will have an opportunity to weigh in on the GSP during the public hearing. With that, let's get the meeting started with the board member roll call for each GSA followed by a participant list identification. Ms. Land, can you please call the role for the West Turlock Sub Basin?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Director Alvarez. Alternate Director Alves. Director Buck.
Present.
Director Chiesa.
Here.
Director Espinoza. Alternate Director Pereira. Director Larson.
Present.
Director Lopez.
Here.
Director Maldonado.
Present.
Director Odom.
Here.
Vice Chair Juritzma.
Here.
And Chair Alamo.
Present. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We do have a quorum of the West Turlock Sub Basin GSA Board.
Thank you.
Could I call the East Side Board? Call the roll call.
Certainly. This is Julianne Phillips with the East Turlock GSA. I will call the roll. We have Director Yatsuya.
Dirk is here.
Oh. Director Ulrich, good to see you.
Yep, I'm here.
Wonderful. Director Ward.
Here.
Thank you. And Chairman Racini. Thank you. We have a quorum of the East Turlock GSA Board.
Julianne. I'm present too.
Thank you, Sean.
I've noted that Director Altal is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now for the participant list, we can see who's attending in the participant panel, but is there any participants who wish to voluntarily identify themselves? Go ahead.
This is Rhett Calkins. Thank you.
This is Milt Treewiler, Turlock citizen.
To Ward Burrows, alternate for the East Turlock Sub Basin.
Peter Trekmeier, Tuolumne River Trust.
Isaac Ariaga, Gallo Vineyards.
Brad Brady, South Valley Farms.
Good evening. This is Christina Maria Bearck with the University of California Agriculture and Natural Resources.
Thank you all for introducing yourself voluntarily. We will now proceed on to a public comment period. Interested persons are welcome to introduce any topic within the agency's jurisdiction. No action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except for the boards may briefly respond to the comments, refer the matter to staff, or request it to be placed on a future agenda. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on any item not specifically listed on the agenda?
Yes, Chair, I would like to, Milt Treewiler.
Go ahead, Milt.
It's been a long and enjoyable venture following the GSA meetings. The only thing I want to remind everyone is that we human beings, once we get something in our brains, we're slow to change our beliefs. It's important that we be open-minded and follow the facts and science. And we try our best to be equitable and just to all parties. And that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Milt. Is there any further public comment? Hearing none and seeing no hands raised, we proceed on to staff updates. Budget update, Michael.
Good evening, everyone. For the basin-wide account, as of 12/31/21, we had $906,435.11. Any questions?
We're not hearing any, Michael. Quite an audience tonight. We'll move on. Thank you for that update. We're going to move on to our consent calendar. For the West Turlock GSA, information on the consent counter has been included within the agenda packet. All items listed below will be acted upon one single roll call vote of the board. There'll be no individual discussion unless we remove an item from the consent counter. If you have a motion or any discussion on the consent counter.
So move, Juritzma.
Thank you, Curtis. Is there a second on the consent counter for the West Turlock?
All second, Director Odom.
Thank you, David. Those are properly moved and segmented to move the consent counter. Is there any further discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair Alamo, my apologies. With there being a resolution in the consent calendar, would you mind if I went ahead and did a roll call vote for the consent calendar for items one, two, and three?
Sure, go ahead and do a roll call.
Thank you, Chair.
Jennifer, this is Miguel Sidi Moles. Sorry to interrupt. I joined a little late. Just wanted to let you know I'm here.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go ahead and get started with you, Director Alvarez.
Yeah.
Director Buck.
Yes.
Director Chiesa.
Yes.
And I don't believe that we've had Merced County join us yet. Do we have either Director Espinoza or Alternate Director Pereira on the line?
You have Alternate Pereira. I vote aye.
Very good. Thank you so much. Director Larson?
Yes.
Director Lopez?
Yes.
Director Maldonado?
Yes.
Director Odom?
Yes.
Vice Chair Juritzma?
Yes.
And Chair Alamo.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Besides, you want to move your consent calendar?
Okay, ask some questions to the board to discuss. Gowers for the East Side.
Pereira, motion to approve.
Dirk is second.
Right, exactly. Okay, yes, we'll call for a roll call.
All right. And I'll call the roll. Director Altal?
Yes.
Director Yatsuya? I'm sorry, Director Ulrich?
Yes.
Director Ward?
Yes.
And Chairman Racini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Julianne, Director Pereira is on as well.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to agenda item G. And open up the public hearing on the, to consider the adoption of the Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan. Is there any questions from the GSA boards from either items at this time? Okay, so we're holding a joint, East and West public hearing, which requires each board to open. Go ahead, Al.
Pretty questions of the East Side Board.
This is Rhett Calkins. Can I make my comments?
Hold on one second, Rhett. We'll let you in a second. So I just wanted to explain that we're holding a joint hearing, the East and the West Board, which requires each board to open the public hearing, after which will be opportunity for comments and questions from the boards and the public. West Turlock opens the hearing first, Pursuit to Water Code, Section 10728 dot four, and Government Code, Section 6066. And ask for any comments or questions from the board or the members or the public on the item. Once the East Turlock GSA Board Chair is up to the open the hearing for the East Turlock GSA.
Yeah, we open the public hearing, Pursuit to the Water Code, 10724. We come up with those statutes. Six oh six. Comment, question from the East Side GSA Board members, the public at this time.
Okay, Rhett, we'll go ahead and start with you then. If you want to make a.
Chair Alamo. Okay, can I put in here, Chair Alamo, sorry? There is a staff presentation. Maybe it may make sense to go through the presentation first and then open up the, you know, we'll continue with the public hearing and take questions from the public on the boards.
That sounds great. That sounds great, Michael. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next slide, please, Herb. Again, we just, you know, my name is Michael Cook. I'm the Chair of the Technical Advisory Committee for the West Turlock Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency. I'll be doing this presentation along with Mike Tietz, my counterpart on the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA, as well as Phyllis Stanton, our consultant from Todd Groundwater. So just so we know, we've been working on this since 2017. A technical consulting team was hired to compile, evaluate, and model the data that goes into the plan. Develop sustainable management criteria with a consulting team with input from member agencies, technical advisory committee representatives, stakeholders, and other interested parties. The overall cost of this effort was about $1.76 million, of which $1 million was paid for with a grant from the Department of Water Resources. We also received funding to help us with our public outreach and facilitation. Next slide, please, Herb. So as you see on the right-hand side, the plan has a number of chapters of those nine there, as well as a executive summary and appendices that are included tonight. We've started work on this really in 2017, the establishment of a technical advisory committee. The technical advisory committee, committee have met over 100 times. And this year, as we've kind of sped up our work on developing the GSP, we developed an ad hoc group, which is like a subcommittee of the technical advisory committee. We've met 29 times this year, helping us, helping put this plan together. And as well as you, your two agencies, the West Turlock and East Turlock GSA Boards. East Turlock has met 59 times since 2017, and the West Turlock has met 28 times since 2017. And again, all this information has been provided as we go on the website, which you see listed there at the bottom of this slide. Okay, next slide. And in terms of public participation, we released kind of the chapters and various tranches as they were completed to maximize participation. As you can see there, the various chapters released at different times. And we finished up towards the end of last year. So we've had a lot of opportunity for people to provide input into the, into the GSP. And with that, I'd like to hand off to Phyllis Stanton to kind of go over quickly or to go over what's in the GSP and some of the public participation and some of the questions and answers we've got through the process. So.
Thank you very much, Michael. I hope everyone can hear me okay. It's wonderful to see all the names again. Happy New Year to you all. Yes, we have now a draft GSP, and we just have summarized some of the findings that we have. We do have an executive summary, as Michael mentioned, so please check that out on the, on the website as well. I know that many of you have followed this process, so you probably could do this slide with me. We certainly have found that there's variability across our sub-basin, that there are some portions of the sub-basin that already are a net groundwater contributor with a net groundwater recharge balance, but there are some areas that remain to be in deficit. Overall, our groundwater use exceeds our sustainable yield, so we are going to need the details that we have in our plan to move it forward. We want to avoid undesirable results, and to do that, we've selected sustainable management criteria. Generally, we'll be managing and maintaining groundwater at 2014 levels around the Merced River and at 2015 levels for the remainder of the sub-basin. We've developed a series of projects and management actions that allow for the sub-basin to come into sustainability. They are necessary to provide us with sustainable management, but we feel like that they're doable and going to move the sub-basin forward in a good way. We do recognize that more data are needed. Ongoing monitoring programs that we've put together are really the critical components of our GSP so that we can improve our understanding of conditions as we go and implement some of our management actions through adaptive management, meaning that we are going to be looking and tracking at groundwater conditions and responding to those conditions as they occur based on actual conditions and not just the 50-year projected future conditions that we've based so much of our plan on with respect to attempting to sort of predict the future there. We have 20 years to achieve sustainability, but we do plan to initiate projects as soon as possible. This sub-basin has moved a lot of things forward already. We have one project almost in construction. We have an ongoing programmatic EIR in place to look at the compliance with SEQA so that we can move our projects forward associated with that. And then finally, we have management actions that we've put in place. These are, these are in place to mitigate any undesirable results that we might see in the interim while we're putting all of the projects in place. Next slide, Herb. We responded to the public comment letters. Thank you all so much. We did get some really good letters that was very helpful for us from thinking about moving the plan forward. There were 14 in total, three from the Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, who've also participated quite a bit in our TAC meetings. The East Side Water District wrote a letter, and that's actually already been addressed. We addressed that internally, working directly with the Water District and also in the GSP at the December board meeting. We received a letter from the National Marine Fisheries Service, from Restore Hetch Hetchy, the Tuolumne River Trust, and California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance, two letters from the Tuolumne River Conservancy, a letter from California Poultry Federation, a letter from a group of NGOs that are listed there, the Nature Conservancy, Union of Concerned Scientists, Audubon, California, Clean Water Action, and Local Government Commission. They collectively submitted a letter that had very helpful information in that. Mr. Rhett Calkins, who's on this call, one of our treasured landowners who has provided us with information and participated in the TAC meetings, so we appreciated that as well. And of course, Mr. Milt Treewiler, who you've heard from previously. Milt has been a steady force of our stakeholders, participating and asking great questions and also submitting a public comment letter, so we really appreciate that. And then finally, an additional letter from South Valley Farms. Next slide, Herb. Those letters that we received actually had a lot of comments in them, so we separated those comments into 110 separate ones and put them into a matrix. There were a variety of topics, but there, these are, you know, sort of my compilation of the main topics that we were asked to address in our public comment letters. People were interested on the impacts of groundwater levels, quality, and monitoring on domestic wells. There was questions on interconnected surface water, including stream flow habitat, stream flow depletions, and the mapping of those, of that information in our GSP. Some questions on groundwater-dependent ecosystems and our analysis of the potential GDEs. Sustainable management criteria, of course, was a big topic with comments on our chronic lowering of water levels, water quality, and interconnected surface water. A couple of questions were on land use policies relating to future development in an overdraft basin. We had two questions on climate change analysis. And then we had other questions on disadvantaged communities relating mostly to drinking water, the human right to water, and the outreach that we've conducted with our underrepresented communities in the sub-basin. And then finally, questions on projects, management action, and funding of the GSP process. And so with that, I will be happy to answer any questions if there are any on the public comment process, but we can probably hold that until we get to the public comment period of this hearing. And if there are no burning questions right now, then I will turn this presentation over to Mike Tietz. He's the East Turlock Sub Basin GSA Coordinator for the TAC, and he's going to walk us through some of the remaining GSP steps and process. So, Mike, over to you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. So I had actually expected that Michael was going to present the additional slides. Michael, if you wouldn't mind doing that. I will just interject that we've collaborated on preparing this presentation and the GSP. And, you know, I think that Michael and others that have spoken have done a real good job of representing what we think about the effort and the implementation going forward. So I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to you, Michael.
Okay, no problem, Mike. So for this hearing, we advertised the public hearing for two weeks before this hearing date. If the boards adopt the GSP, we'll upload the plan to the State Department of Water Resources Sigma Portal. Obviously, we will remember the deadline is January 31st. We hope to do it a little bit before then, just in case there are any hiccups in the process. At that point, DWR will post the plan for public and agency comment. So there will be additional opportunity for members of the public or other groups to, to comment on the proposed Turlock Sub Basin GSP. And then DWR will start to evaluate the GSP to determine if it complies with Sigma and the regulations and whether we can achieve sustainability. And they have up to two years to provide us with a written assessment of whether the GSP will meet the requirements of the legislation. Next slide, please, Herb. And so these are the possible outcomes. They can approve it and but they can recommend corrective actions, so they can make changes there. They can determine it's incomplete, which means corrective actions have to be done, and we have 180 days to address those deficiencies. Hopefully, but if there are any deficiencies corrected and the plan gets approved. If not, if we can't make the corrections or we don't hand in a complete plan, there's a consultation process between the State Department of Water Resources and the State Water Resources Control Board to determine if the plan is adequate or inadequate. And if it is inadequate, State Water Board will intervene. Obviously, we felt we were turning in a complete plan, hope to get approval, potentially some corrective actions, which is not obviously a showstopper, just very typical. And we look forward to a positive outcome. Next slide, Herb. Okay, what happens next? And we've said this before, and I never coined this phrase, but it's a good one. The GSP gets to the start line, not the finish line. So we have to implement quickly maybe management actions and implementation measures in the plan right away. So we'll have to look at the schedule and budget, and the GSP revise that as necessary. And then the technical advisory committees will get together and develop schedules and budgets for this coming year. Number of immediate tasks spring to mind, such as installing more data monitoring wells, finalizing the GRAP or Recharge Assessment Tool, and development of the Program Environmental Impact Report, to mention at your last meeting. And ironically, our first annual report is due April 1st of this year, so we'll turn the plan in and within a couple of months have to do an annual report, and that is already being worked on. So again, this is not a plan that will sit on the shelf, but a plan that has to be implemented right away and will be busy in the first couple of years in particular with a number of issues and activities to move this plan forward. So Herb, next slide. Again, I mentioned these activities, or these support activities will be getting involved in right away, such as monitoring, groundwater monitoring, data caps, developing the accounting mechanism for water supplies, and looking at action plans if we do exceed a minimum threshold. This could result in undesirable results. So how do we respond if the, if undesirable results occur? And then further refining our model, installing a data management, or adopting a data management system, work on well registration, and working, of course, always on funding opportunities and strategies to bring in outside sources of funds to help us implement the groundwater sustainability plan. Next slide, please, Herb. So here we are, the four years at the end of the road. And obviously, the team is here to answer any questions. And at our last joint technical advisory committee meeting, both the East Turlock and West Turlock technical advisory committees recommended to the respective boards adopt the plan with the executive summary and response to comments matrix we put together over the last few weeks. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, everyone. I think we're going to start with Rhett, since he was all ready to go. We got this public hearing open, so Rhett, you're on board.
Okay, thank you. This is Rhett Calkins, and these are my comments. It is recently known by public that there are now pending and very difficult water basin accounting structure discussions to take place between the East GSA and the West GSA for the sustainable operation of the basin. An additional 24 months is planned to complete this missing component of our sub-basin's plan. Sub basin's waters to make decisions possible to the public. As noted in a recent document that's included with the agenda packet from a special joint GSA's board meeting on November 15th, 2021, quote, "The East GSA and the West GSA have been in discussion for several months," unquote. Okay, this is with a document that describes the position of each sides of the GSAs for the accounting of groundwater. This is the first indication on the positions taken by each of the GSAs and put to public light. I found out about this on December 9th, 2021, so very recently. Which is at stake by the public in the whole Turlock Sub Basin. The Turlock Irrigation District is looking at how the state of California's proposed Bay Delta Water Plan may reduce surface water for irrigation use, perhaps by 40%, perhaps by more. We don't know. And this probably also affects the plans the City of Turlock and City of Series have through the implementation of the Stanislaus Regional Water Surface Supply Project. So I ask that we please place any draft water accounting documentation in a prominent place on the turlockgroundwater.org website. Make it accessible. Make it accessible. I suggest that these documents be made under a link called Working Documents for Draft Water Accounting Structure, or some other title, easy for the public to find. I continue to request that these discussions and any documents be made in meetings or public workshops for the public to have access and provide their feedback and direction to the accounting structure for water in the Turlock Sub Basin. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhett. Is there any other comments from the boards or from the public? We got both public hearings open currently.
Hi, good evening. This is Natalie on behalf of Leadership Council. Would it be okay if I take a moment to make comments?
Go ahead, Natalie. Thank you.
Thank you. So like I mentioned, my name is Natalie. I'm calling in on behalf of Leadership Council to provide comments regarding the Turlock Sub Basin Draft GSP. First, while we're, we're very encouraged to see that Draft Chapter 2 of the GSP identifies, describes, and provides maps of disadvantaged communities, community water systems, and private well communities in discussing groundwater quality issues within the sub-basin. Draft GSP does not include information on passing current drinking water issues within these communities. Additionally, the Draft GSP does not analyze all drinking water contaminants in the sub-basin and does not provide an explanation why certain contaminants are omitted from analysis. Second, after evaluating the data and analysis presented regarding the water budget, we find that the description in Draft Chapter 5 of the water budget, along with the supporting data and assumptions, is incomplete. Additionally, it is unclear if or how water demands from rural domestic water users and small community water systems are included in the water budgets presented for the sub-basin. Third, while the sustainability goal includes several admirable goals to manage groundwater sustainability in the Turlock Sub Basin, it displays a major gap with respect to safe drinking water for existing residents. Fourth, Draft Chapter 6 identifies nitrate, arsenic, uranium, total soft solids, 123 TCP and PCEs as the GSA's contaminants of concern. We commend the GSA's analysis of existing contaminants and their inclusion of these, this list of contaminants. However, the GSP must also include other contaminants like manganese and DCP. And last, the GSAs must consider the interests of all beneficial users, including domestic well owners and disadvantaged communities, and avoid disparate impacts on protected groups. The GSP must also concretely outline how each objective and the overall sustainability goal will be achieved. Unfortunately, the projects and management actions set forth in the Draft GSP do not adequately account for drinking water users or the needs of disadvantaged communities pertaining to protected groups under state law and do not show how the sustainability goal will be achieved. For further comments, considerations, and recommendations on how we believe you could address some of these concerns, please refer to our public comment letter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments, Natalie. Any further public or board comments at this time? Hearing none and seeing no hands raised or star nines on the phone, I will go ahead and close the West Turlock GSA public hearing at this time. And ask the East Side to do the same. Thank you very much for that, Al. With that, if there's no other further comments from the board, I will entertain a motion to adopt the GSP and authorize the documentation submitted to the DWR at this time.
Chair Alamo, this is Curtis Juritzma with Hillmark County Water District. I just want to thank everyone for the time and effort that they've put into this plan. I know it's been meetings on top of meetings and, and hours on top of hours, and a lot of people have really contributed their time and their intelligence to putting together a great plan. And so I just want to say thank you to everyone, and with that, I will move as stated.
Second, Kieza.
Thank you for those comments, Curtis. Thank you for that second veto. Is there any further comments or questions? Hearing none. Ms. Lang, will you call the vote, please?
Thank you. Director Alvarez?
Yes.
Director Buck?
Yes.
Director Kieza?
Yes.
Director Larson?
Yes.
Director Lopez?
Yes.
Director Maldonado?
Yes.
Director Odom?
Yes.
Alternate Director Pereira?
Yes.
Vice Chair Juritzma?
Yes.
And Chair Alamo?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I would ask the East Side to do the same at this time.
Yeah. And I have a motion of second for the East Side GSA for to adopt the GSP.
I got my first file. My first one? My first file? Where's that?
Is there a motion from the, from the East Turlock GSA to adopt the GSP?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Director Eltal.
As stated.
This is Dirk Allstegit.
Thank you, Director Ulrich. And I will call the role. Director Pereira?
I vote yes.
Director Eltal?
Yes.
Director Ulrich?
Yes.
Director Ward?
Yes.
And Chairman Racini? Thank you.
Thank you, East Side. That was a monumental task and undertaking. We'll move right into comments from the boards. I would like to make a brief comment, just echoing Curtis's the long and hard work everybody involved and the good plan that I think we've got in place now. I know there's a lot of work ahead of us, but we've made it long strides and great strides to get here. With that, is there any further comments from the boards? Seeing no hands raised and hearing none, I would pass it over to the East Side. Is there any comment from the East Side Board?
Yeah, just to our seat, I'd like to thank everybody for the time and the effort in considering projects. It's taken a long time, a lot of years to get to this part of our irrigation programs. And I want to thank everybody to get it to this part. Any other comments for the board members of East Side? Okay, I think Chairman Alamo, we're down to I, I believe. German? Is that where we're going?
Sounds great. We'll adjourn the meeting on the West Side, too.
Well, like I say, it was an evening and a meeting we just waited for it to get through, and it went through very nicely. And I'd like to thank everybody for the participation and the house and the energy put into where we are today. Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you all.